Good afternoon. I want to thank everyone for coming to this very important meeting of the City Council as we do to people's work. And at this time, council members of you would please stand for the invocation which will be given by Pastor Ronald Thompson of Mount Sinai Family Life Christian Center, and then please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Our most holy Father, thank you for this day that you have made. Our hearts are glad, our spirits rejoice to be in it. Our prayer this evening is that with your help, our righteous minds will prevail. By your word, we know how good and pleasant it is when we all come together in unity. Bless each member of our City Council and this assembly. May we come to know that unity has power that enable the words spoken here today to reach beyond these walls and touch the hearts of the entire Portsmouth community. May all that is said and done reflect your love and your will for all the citizens of our fair city. May each presentation reflect the honor and dignity due our elected officials and these hollowed walls, for we know that you have ordained all authority. Guide our paths as we walk, and as we walk, let us walk in righteousness for your name's sake, that you may be satisfied and glorified with what we do. In the matchless name of our Lord, amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
All right. Thank you, Pastor. And before you leave, would you tell us a little bit about your community day?
Yes, we had a wonderful event that ran from the 7th and 8th of this month, and we had over a thousand participants. We gave away free food, we had health fare, the policemen were there, the firemen were there, various agencies were there, entertainment. It was a great event, wildly attended, and we had several sponsors, and we were just very overwhelmed by the response from the city, and it was just a glorious time. So we just thank God and the City of Portsmouth for their participation.
Thank you for your leadership. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Just want to mention also Pastor Thompson's wife, Minister Francis Thompson, want to commend her. She ran for school board for the city of Virginia Beach, and so want to commend her for her boldness and stepping out and running for elected position. Good to see you.
Thank you. Thank you both for coming. Members of the City Council, please indicate your presence electronically.
Seven members of City Council are present.
All right. All right. Very good. Members of the City Council, you have before your consideration the minutes of a call meeting of August the 11th, 2015, and a regular meeting of August the 11th, 2015. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
Move adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. The minutes are adopted 7-0.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. 15-306 presentations, special flag presentation to the city of Portsmouth. At this time, we'd like to ask Mr. David Summers to please come forward. We'd also like to ask Councilman Moody, Councilman Cherry, and Councilman Edmonds if they would join the mayor for this presentation.
These are our veterans, by the way.
Yes, sir.
All right. My name is David Summers. I'm a retired Navy Chief Petty Officer and a resident of Portsmouth. I want to thank the mayor and the members of City Council for making time on this busy agenda evening. This flag is being presented to the citizens once again on the 10-year anniversary of its original presentation. This presentation is in an effort to keep an honor request made by the late Mayor James Holly. The significance of this flag was that it was flown on a site where the Taliban were routed from Kandahar, Afghanistan, and on missions over Iraq and Afghanistan between 2004 and 2005. It was my intention to provide this flag not only to the citizens of this city, but that future generations would have a piece of history to enjoy and to remind them of the sacrifice that servicemen and women provide on their behalf for the safety and security of this nation and for the freedoms and liberties they enjoy. To some, it's just a flag, but to me and veterans like me, it's more than that. Our nation's flag is a symbol of democracy wherever it is flown. I am proud of my service and my sacrifice, and I'm hoping that that service will preserve freedom and liberty for the next generation. I'm going to read two quotes that I hope will resonate positively in the hearts of the citizens here tonight, as it did when I first read them. And following the reading, sailors from VAW 120 will perform a ceremony that's performed in many retirement ceremonies, including mine, where the flag is passed from the most junior sailor to the most senior. During that time, Chief Gonzalez will read Old Glory. First quote is by Woodrow Wilson. "The flag of the United States has not been created by rhetorical sentences and declarations of independence and in bills of rights. It has been created by the experience of a great people, and nothing is written upon it that has not been written by their life. It is the embodiment, not of a sentiment, but of a history." And a quote Franklin Night Lane. "I swing before your eyes as a bright gleam of color, a symbol of yourself, the pictured suggestion of that big thing which makes this nation. My stars and my stripes are your dream and your labors. They are bright with cheer, brilliant with courage, firm with faith, because you have made them so out of your heart. For you are the makers of the flag, and it is well that you glory in the making." The nation's flag really does represent we, the people, all of us. We're all in this together under one flag.
Detail. Hold.
My name is Old Glory. I fly atop the world's tallest buildings. I stand watch in America's halls of justice. I fly majestically over great institutions of learning. I stand guard with the greatest military power in the world. Look up and see me. I stand for peace, honor, truth, and justice. I stand for freedom. I am confident. I am arrogant. I am proud. When I am flown from my fellow banners, my head is a little higher, my colors a little truer. I bow to no one. I am recognized all over the world. I am worshipped. I am saluted. I am respected. I am revered, and I am loved, and I am feared. I have fought in every battle of every war for more than 200 years. Gettysburg, Shiloh, Appomattox, San Juan Hill, the trenches of France, the Argonne Forest, Anzio, Rome, the beaches of Normandy, Guam, Okinawa, Tarawa, Korea, Vietnam, the Persian Gulf, and the scores of places long forgotten by all. Except by those who were there with me, I was there. I led my sailors and Marines. I followed them. I watched over them. They loved me. I was on a small hill on Iwo Jima. I was dirty, battle-worn, and tired, but my sailors and Marines cheered me, and I was proud. I was at Ground Zero in New York City on September 11th as cowardly fanatics attacked America. I was raised from the ashes of once proud buildings by brave firefighters, heroes who risked their lives to save others, showing all that America, although bloodied, will never be beaten. Those who would destroy me cannot win, for I am the symbol of freedom, of one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all. I have been soiled, burned, torn, and trampled on the streets of my own country, and when it is by those who I am served with in battle, it hurts. But I shall overcome, for I am strong. I have slipped the bonds of earth, and from my vantage point on the moon, I stand watch over the uncharted new frontiers of space. I have been a silent witness to all of America's finest hours, but my finest hours comes when I am torn in strips, to be used as bandages for my wounded comrades on the field of battle, when I fly half-mast to honor my soldiers, and when I lie in the trembling arms of a grieving mother at the gravesite of her fallen son or daughter. I am proud. My name is Old Glory. Long may I wave, dear God. Long may I wave. Mayor Wright, would you please come forward and receive this flag on behalf of the citizens
Detail. Forward. Mark.
Thank you all very much, and we will proudly display this flag, or re-display this flag in this showcase to honor not only your request, but Mayor Holly's request. Again, thank each and every one of you. God bless you.
At this time, Vice Mayor Simmons will join Mayor Wright for a presentation.
Very fitting after this flag presentation. As your military liaison for the City Council, Mr. Moody, Councilman Moody and I had the pleasure last week of sailing in on the Coast Guard bark eagle from Fort Monroe to Portsmouth. I hope all of you were able to see the eagle here. She was open for visitors last Thursday, and Mr. Moody and I presented the captain of the boat a Portsmouth city flag to fly on eagle, and hopefully, when she returns again. And I accepted on behalf of the city to present to you, for that case, a beautiful photograph of eagle presented to the city of Portsmouth on the occasion of her 2015 visit.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. For you all know the history there of the eagle and what she means to not only us, but the sailors and the young people, and the training and all of those things that go into operating that vessel. It's just phenomenal. And if you have not had a chance to board her, and just take a tour and look at all of the things that go on there that make that vessel operate, it truly is amazing. And the coordination with those young people, and they come in and take her out, and they all have hands on deck, and they all have certain responsibilities. It's really amazing. So Vice Mayor, thank you very much for presenting this to me. Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. At this time, we will have the presentation of lapel pins to newly appointed board and commission members, and we ask Councilman Edmonds to please go to the sergeant-at-arms desk. And as I call your name, if you would please come forward for the presentation. With the Behavioral Healthcare Services Advisory Board, Mr. Paul Bell, if he's here. The Board of Building Code Appeals, Mr. William Grant. The Board of Zoning Appeals, Reverend Leon Boone. And Mr. Gary Bunting. For the Community Criminal Justice Board, Mr. James Cullen. With the Library Board, Ms. Felicia Smith. Councilman Edmonds, I believe that's everyone we have here this evening.
On behalf of our illustrious mayor and my fellow council persons, it is my good honor and good pleasure to welcome you, valiant ones who have stepped forth, who has heard the clarion call that we need help in the vineyard, and you have stepped down to answer the call. Serve well, serve long, and serve with distinction, because we are happy, glad to have you in the ranks of the commissions that you've been assigned to. Some of you I know personally, but I'll get to know you as time moves on, perhaps if I'm voted back for another four years. But in the meantime, we thank you all for coming, stepping forward, and saying something. I'm going to pass the mic, allow each one of you to say something.
William Grant, glad to be on the board, and hope to do a good job for everybody.
It's Leon J. Boone. I'm a Mount Hermon feller. Been in this town quite some time, and I'm glad to be able to be here today, and I'm trusting that God will give me the wisdom that I may be able to serve this city well.
Gary Bunting, I'm looking forward to serving, and I just agree with what my two colleagues here said, everything they said. Thank you.
James Cullen, my lovely wife Kathy and I found our way down here when I was assigned here as a Coast Guard Reserve Officer, temporary assignment from New Jersey, and we fell in love with the city, and we decided we wanted to move here. We bought a house here. So we're really looking forward to helping out in any way that we can. Thank you, everybody.
Hi, my name is Felicia Smith. It is my desire that throughout our tenure, that we'll leave an indelible mark of positivity that moves this city with a fire toward the destiny for which it was designed, and, and that that fire of change would sweep this whole area and the nation, and that the sleeping giant that lies within Portsmouth would arise.
And to that end, welcome aboard and sharing in the greatest city in the United States of America, Portsmouth VA. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cherry.
Yes, Sir Mayor, I think Ms. Smith and Dr. Edmonds kind of summed it up, but I'd be remiss if I didn't just take this opportunity to thank all of them for being so serving. Reverend Leon J. Boone, as we all know, is a longtime servant in this city, pastor, and was a former council candidate himself, and has been a mentor, friend, and father figure for me since the time I arrived in Portsmouth. So I just want to put a big acknowledge and thank you for even all the years of service you've given to Portsmouth for willing to give some more. Thank you, sir.
Well done. Well done. All right, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to three minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your three minutes, you will see a green light. Two minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of three minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address counsel on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments. Public hearing, 15-307, Public Hearing on the Comprehensive Plan, CP 1501, citywide. The city of Portsmouth seeks approval of a flood plane management plan that provides guidance for managing and reducing flood hazards and outlines strategies for flood prevention for the coming years. The plan identifies flooding issues and makes recommendations to assist in determining at-risk status, reducing flood damage, and reducing recovery time after a flood event. Vision principles, neighborhoods, and sense of community and quality of life. Electronic roll call, and I have a registered speaker.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. Godfrey. I am Meg Pittinger. I'm with the Department of Neighborhood Advancement, and I'm here tonight to talk about the updated flood plane management plan for the city of Portsmouth. You will maybe remember, a few months ago, we had the flood plane management ordinance and the maps that you adopted, and they actually went into effect on August 3rd. Those are ordinances, they're a set of regulations to control development and that sort of thing in flood zones. What we're talking about tonight is separate, it's a flood plane management plan that gives the city guidance and talks about what actions we can take to help manage and mitigate flood issues within the city. So the way I sort of like to describe it to people is the regulations are sort of what other people have to do, even though the city has to abide by it, but it's for development, and the plan guides the city's actions. The maps are also part of the regulations. That's what determines what flood zone people are in. The plan actually doesn't determine that, so that's already been determined by the FEMA maps, and that's the difference between the two documents. Oh, there we go. So the goals of the plan, and these are shared by the ordinance, are to protect people, to protect property, and to have people be able to use their property to the greatest extent they can, but also by protecting that, protecting, you know, the environment and protecting the property. This update is the third update of the plan. In the past, the city did it either with staff or mostly with staff. This time, we partnered with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. They actually went to their bosses and asked for permission to put it in their budget, so it didn't cost the city any money except for our staff time. And the plan is available for those who are interested electronically on our website there. It's portsmouthva.gov/dna/flood-plan，请. So if you need that, if you're not sure, call me, but it is available electronically. It is 100 and something pages, so we're trying to save the trees out there, not print too many, but it is available electronically. In order to get credit for the plan in our CRS program, CRS is Community Rating System, which is part of the National Flood Insurance Program, we have to follow these 10 steps. We can't just get together in a room and decide to write something, and so this plan does follow those steps, which gives us credit, keeps us in the CRS program, which then gives the citizens discounts on their own individual flood insurance premiums. That's the whole reason that we do this. So we had staff and the Corps of Engineers who did it, but we also had a diverse group of citizens that came together. You appointed them back in September of 14, and they were citizens, military members, members from other organizations, business leaders, that came together and gave us input again. So it was not just what staff think. I always tell people, we already know what we think. So this is to get lots of input. I don't know if any of them are here. I know Mark is here. I saw him come in, and they were essential to this process. We couldn't have done this without them, because they brought it from their perspective. What is it like in Craddock? What is it like in Old Town? What is it like in Churchland? Because again, we already know what we think. So that was essential to this process, and we really, really, really thank them for their input. And then they're also going to help us get the word out. When we start and continue doing public outreach, they're going to help us with that process. So again, you appointed them in September of 2014. We met with the group from October of 14 through February 15 through snowstorms, as I've mentioned in the past, and they were great, coming out in the snow and coming out at different times. We presented the plan on August 4th to the Planning Commission, who unanimously recommended approval, and here we are tonight for the public hearing, the first reading. And then in the fall, we'll reconvene the group to talk about what happened, what we did, what hurricanes we didn't have, Fred, and what we want to do going forward. So the plan has a bunch of elements. It's got the flooding history. Obviously, Portsmouth has been flooding since Portsmouth, before Portsmouth was a town. It's not new. Talks about sea level rise, which is becoming more and more of an issue, the repetitive and severely repetitive loss structures, financial aspects, most of the things that you have to do aren't free. There are some low-cost things, and we try and address those with people, but financial aspects, what it's going to, what it's going to cost. Obviously, we're not going to put a sea wall around, you know, a flood wall around the whole entire city. We're not going to remove all the properties from, you know, the flood plain. So what are the financial aspects? What are the continuing actions? Some of the things you continue to do, whether it's outreach, or, you know, working on the stormwater system, or that sort of thing, and some are long-term. A lot of this stuff isn't going to happen tomorrow, but it's okay, what's going to happen, you know, for our children? So as I said, there are a series of repetitive loss maps in the plan. There's 25 of them in total, and they identify areas that have had repetitive losses, which is a specific FEMA definition, which is in the plan, about what that means. And as you can see, some of them are in flood zones and some aren't. Some are other issues, whether it's, you know, drainage problems, lots of concrete, lots of asphalt, or whatever. Some of them, and that helps us identify what's going on here. If this is flooding and it's not in a flood zone, what can we do? Or if this is flooding, it is in a flood zone, what can we help do? And so there's a whole series of these maps, and one thing I'll recommend to people, they say, hey, is this property in a flood, has it ever been damaged? Well, I can't tell them that, it's protected by privacy laws, but I can say, let's go look at the repetitive loss area maps and see if it's in that general area, and it gives you some idea of what's going on. So sea level rise is in the plan. They've been tracking sea level, the flood levels at the Sewell Point Tide Gauge for over 80 years. They have that amount of data, and it's going up about four and a half millimeters per year, which that doesn't sound like a lot, but over 100 years, that's a foot and a half, which is a lot of water. If you think about a foot and a half of water, and that's above regular tides, that's sea level rise. And they don't expect it to continue linearly. They expect it to actually go up. It's a curve, that's why you may have seen the curves. It actually is going to go exponentially, is what they predict. And they're predicting it to perhaps be worse than what they thought originally, because there's more factors involved. So the flood plane management plan has a series of actions in it for, again, this is things that recommend for the city to do. There's general activities, some of that is outreach. There's economic development. We all know that that's very important in our city. Infrastructure activities, that's, you know, like I said, whether that's storm drains, culverts, that sort of things. Environmental quality, it's very, you know, we've got the river out here, Elizabeth River Project's trying to make it swimable and fishable by 2020. It's important that we don't damage that ecosystem. And then a special series of activities for those repetitive loss areas. And this is just a list of the current public outreach that we've been doing. We're going to continue doing all of this stuff and expand it. We'll be coming back in a few months with something called the PPI, the Program for Public Information, which talks even further about public outreach that we're doing. Most of this is free, lots of it is low cost. There's obviously some costs when we're doing mailings and some of the stuff we're required to do, but a lot of this is free. We have a really great relationship with the marketing department, and they'll send out pretty much anything that we want to send out. So the next steps will be to adopt the plan, and then for us to implement the actions in the plan. And as I said, we'll reconvene the task force in the fall, and then the plan will be updated at regular intervals. It's not a static document, sit it on, you know, shelf and forget you ever did it. It's a living document, and that's how we consider it, because it's changing. Sea level rise is changing, the environment is changing, so we consider this to be a living document. And I will take any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you. Any questions or comments, or, all right, we've got one speaker?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mark, excuse me. Mr. Mark Adaldy Yatrowski.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, and fellow citizens.
Good evening, sir.
As a member of the flood plane management task force, I want to share with you that it was an honor to be able to serve the community as one of the voices that... it was an honor to be able to serve the community as one of the voices that provided input to the Department of Neighborhood Advancement. It was a pleasure to work with Mr. Russo, Ms. Pittenger, and my fellow task force members. I'm proud of the city for continuing to take an initiative that will result in real savings to the citizenry. By virtue of our participation at this level in this way, we stand to realize real savings in terms of flood insurance premiums. You can't say how much it will be, because there's a whole approval process that goes on, the council is integral to that, you have to approve the maps, the floodplain management plan, and so on, it has to be received and accepted by the federal government, but these are real dollars to people who are in the primary flood zones and in the non-flood zones. An interesting statistic, as somebody who buys flood insurance but is not in the flood zone, part of the material that FEMA distributes to us indicates that 20% of flood damage is to people whose properties are not in the flood zone. So, this is an important program, and the city's getting ahead of the curve is commendable. So, thank you for your role in that, thank you to the Department of Neighborhood Advancement for looking out for the interests of the community.
Thank you, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item CP 1501. At this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have up to three minutes to speak on item CP 1501. Members of city council, this public hearing is closed.
Move for adoption.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is approved, 7-0.
All right, very good. Madam Clerk, before we continue, it's customary to recognize our distinguished guests when they're in attendance, and I see our school board chairman here in attendance, Mr. Bridgefield. Would you please stand, sir? It's pleased to have you here. And it's also customary, and our clerk is trying to ignore the task of letting the whole world know, when we have some of our staff go through professional development and achieve certain accreditations, we're honored and pleased that they want to do that. Kia, I'm talking about you, so come on back up here.
That's why she's running.
I'm going to yield to our clerk to be able to give you an update on one of our newest certified members here, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir, Ms. Waters, who is trying to run across the back of the room. Kia Waters is our senior deputy city clerk, and Kia has recently received her Certified Municipal Clerk certification, which is a huge deal in the clerk's world. It's taken her at least five years to gain this certification, and it's through attending institutes that's handled by Old Dominion University, it's by taking classes, and it also encompasses her job experience. So, we are very proud of Kia and very delighted that she has received the certification.
All right, Madam Clerk, thank you.
Yes, sir. Unfinished Business 15-288, Use Permit, Item A, Resolution granting the request of Jacqueline Campbell, representing the modern free tri-state of Virginia, grant counsel for a use permit for a fraternal lodge at 21 Cavalier Boulevard, UP 1507, first reading vote, 6-0, approved. Vision principle, neighborhoods and a sense of community and quality of life. Electronic roll call, and I have a registered speaker, Mr. Mark Adaldick-Yutrowski.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council and fellow citizens. I would hope that in going through your agenda packets, you would have read through the transcript of speakers at the Planning Commission meeting. Before I left for vacation, I did speak on this topic. I don't want to take for granted that you read my remarks, those of you who did, thank you, those of you who didn't, my main point about this project is that the area in which the facility lies is a very small area. It sits on a dead-end street, it would be a cul-de-sac, except there's no sack or no cul, I'm not sure which is which, and to have a facility that will accommodate over 100 people on an area that is that small creates a burden for the neighborhood. Now, I know my good friend, the president of Wilson Ward Civic League, considered it an asset to the community, but I don't believe any of the leadership of the Wilson Ward Civic League actually lives on that street. And so, if you have people there for a large event, the street will be clogged. There are elderly people living in that section, if an ambulance were necessary, if a fire engine were necessary, there would be serious issues in terms of navigating that street. For these reasons, I feel that the use proposed for that building is not compatible with the neighborhood. That was my purpose, that was my reason for opposing this at the Planning Commission, and my reason for restating that opposition. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Members of council, Ms. Jacqueline Campbell is available if you have questions. Would you like to call her forward?
Questions or comments from Ms. Campbell?
Okay.
No, definitely.
We have no additional speakers on this item?
No, appropriate. Second, sir.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted, 7-0. Item B, Resolution granting the request of Rochelle Scott to amend the conditions of a previously approved use permit, UP 1105, to operate a daycare center at 915 High Street. The amendments proposed are to extend the hours of operation to 5:30 a.m. to 11:30 p.m. and allow drop-off and pickup on High Street. UP 1508, first reading vote, 6-0, approved. Vision principle, a robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call, and I have a registered speaker, Mr. Mark Adaldick-Yutrowski.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council and fellow citizens. Again, like the last item, I spoke on this at the Planning Commission meeting in July. My major concern about the proposal, not that I, and there is one provision that I am concerned about, that is the pickup and drop-off on High Street. The facility is located at a point on High Street where the street narrows from two lanes to one, and where the pickup and drop-off would occur is in that zone. I'm concerned about vehicles traveling downtown, not the vehicles that are stopping there, but the ones that are passing them by. I feel that it is a danger to those who are picking up and dropping off principally. So, I would prefer to see that condition removed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to say, I was at the Planning Commission meeting, and they did hear Mr. Adaldick-Yutrowski, and the feeling there was because the drop-off was going to be, children would be exiting the car on the right-hand side, and they'd be between the car and the building, that was why they didn't see that, had the same concern that he did for this, that the car coming that way would have actually crossed the street to actually engage someone, one of pedestrians.
We have no additional speakers on this item?
No, appropriate. Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted, 7-0. City Manager's Report 15-308, Adoption of an Ornus to Appropriate the Sum of $560,000 in the Administration Attendance and Health Classification of the FY 2015-16 Portsmouth Schools, excuse me, Portsmouth Public Schools General Fund, the sum of $216,526, and the Operation and Maintenance Classification of the FY 2015-16 Portsmouth Public Schools General Fund, and the sum of $12,223 in the 2015-16 Portsmouth Public Schools Textbook Fund, with all of the said sums being appropriated to the fund to fund the first quarter of FY 2015-16. Vision principles, quality of life, and lifelong learning community. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted, 7-0. 15-309, Adoption of an Ornus Accepting a Grant in the Amount of $20887, excuse me, $874 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services, and Required Local Matching Funds of $73,470 from the Portsmouth Public Schools, and Appropriating the Total Amount of $274,344 in the FY 2015-16 Grants Fund for Use by the Portsmouth Police Department in Connection with the School's Resource Officer Program. Vision principles, lifelong learning community, neighborhoods and a sense of community, and efficient responsive government. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Adoption, second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted, 7-0. 15-310, Adoption of an Ornus Accepting a Grant in the Amount of $333,588 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services, and Appropriating Said Amount in the FY 2015-16 Grants Fund for Use by the Commonwealth's Attorney's Office for the Victim Witness Program. Vision principle, neighborhoods and a sense of community. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted, 7-0. 15-311, Adoption of a Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute a Second Amended and Restated Portsmouth-Virginia Enterprise Zone Local Incentives Grants Funding Agreement with the Economic Development Authority of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia. Vision principles, neighborhoods, and sense of community, and a robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call, and I have a speaker, Mr. Mark Adaldick-Yutrowski.
Mr. Yutrowski, you're one out of three tonight, you're going to try to get 50-50?
I'm batting my usual.
Good evening.
My record is unbroken. I looked at the chagrin on the face of the mayor and councilmember Cherry during the last budget cycle, and they wanted to know, where are the dollars from all this economic development activity that we've been doing? Why are we facing a proposal to raise the real estate tax by 17 cents? And this program is part of the reason. What we give as incentive grants is the tax money that the economic development was intended to bring in. We give it back. So, it's a kickback, and to me, it is counterproductive. These last for five years, they can be extended for another five years. And effectively, what's happening is, those businesses that qualify for this type of grant are getting a subsidy from the other businesses in the city that never were eligible for such a grant, people who paid the full freight on the tax bills from day one of establishing their businesses. It creates winners and losers. If somebody has a reason to do business in Portsmouth, we should help them to set up. But to give them favored tax treatment when what they're doing is the same thing as other people have done and are doing, that to me is inequitable. The other thing is, this is supposed to promote new jobs in Portsmouth, this is part of the rationale behind it, but there is no guarantee in this program that a single Portsmouth resident will be employed in this business. They can employ people from anywhere. And we saw some of that with Aldi's doing their job fair in Norfolk for the new business in Portsmouth. What's that about? I oppose this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Wurdeke.
Yes, question, I think probably staff can answer this. The second amended and restated Portsmouth-Virginia Enterprise Zone Local Incentives, is this the same program incentives that we discussed a few months ago, and it's just being revised?
Yeah, I think so. That should be correct. Yes, sir, it is, and this is the, that set of revisions which you approved, we took to the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development, they approved them, and now you're enacting them.
Right, and this is one that had the language about the minimum wage?
Yes, sir. That was the discussion you had back in February.
Right, right, okay.
All right, Madam Clerk.
We have no additional speakers, sir. We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted, 6-1. New Business 15-312, Boards and Commissions, Councilman Edmonds.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Mayor, and fellow colleagues. We neglected, or I neglected to call out KCO G, is he here tonight?
No.
No. We're appointing him for the next upcoming.
May I second that Mr. G be appointed to the Housing Authority?
Okay.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to appoint Mr. G to the Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority.
Right, and he will be here next meeting?
Next meeting.
Be pen.
That's true.
You're voting electronically.
Very good, thank you.
This item is adopted, 7-0. 15-313, Items Submitted by Council Members.
Okay, let me first of all remind everyone that this upcoming Friday, August 28th, at 4:00 at four o'clock at I C Norcom High School, we'll have the oath of office ceremony for our new city manager, Dr. Lydia Patton. So, we want to invite each and every one of you to come and be a part of this historic occasion in our city. She will be the first woman ever appointed as city manager. And with that announcement, I want to also take this time to thank our acting city manager, Brandon Godfrey, for doing an outstanding job during the interim. We, as a city, continue to have a deep bench and have people that can step in and do the work of the people and of the city, and that's what we're about. We're about professional development, what we just mentioned tonight here with Keira, and all of the other things to make sure that we always have people that can step in. So, Brandon, I want to thank you, sir, for your leadership. So, Friday, come out, and if you have a big hat, you might want to wear it. You won't be alone. Secondly, I want to also just mention that this morning, at eight-thirty at Wilson High School, I was privileged to speak to about two hundred, close to about two hundred new teachers coming into our school system. They're having their new teacher academy today and tomorrow, and we've got a lot of exciting people, glad to relocate into Portsmouth for teaching, and probably about half of that group were brand-new. I asked them to raise their hands, and which ones were, as I put it, wet behind the ears, and they put them up. So, we want to welcome them to the Portsmouth family, to our team, and look forward to everything that they can do when it comes to meeting our kids where they are and helping them excel and achieve the things that we all want, no matter where you live and what your political stances are. And then finally, I want to thank all of our citizens, but I want to first of all thank this city council. You know, we had our Community Day Back-to-School Rally this weekend, and that idea was birthed right here on this council about six months ago, or five months ago, just before the budget season. We talked about us as a city doing something to forge a new relationship. We had a new superintendent coming on board, and a new relationship with our city council and our school board, and all of the things that we wanted to project out as a positive image to the community. And that's all I needed to hear from this council was, yeah, let's do something. And so, with that, I took the ball running, and they allowed me. Nobody stopped me, at least, anyway. So, this weekend, we were extremely pleased to have seven thousand citizens show up for a back-to-school Community Day Rally here in the city, and it was completely run by volunteers. Mr. Pace and I had several conversations, and he was very concerned with the idea, but we talked about us as a community, working and doing things as a community, and I was extremely proud that that morning, an hour before the event opened, we had a hundred people standing at the gate, ready to volunteer. They were civic leagues, they were fraternities and sororities. It was really amazing, a hundred people. We thought that was a little overkill until about an hour later, and people start wrapping around the city, and then about two hours later, we had about five thousand people there. And probably in another hour, Mr. Pace, we were at a close to about seven thousand people. If you were here Saturday, it was amazing. And to all of those volunteers and all those people that came in and stepped in and done different things, it was truly driven by the citizens. We had committees that were appointed right there. We had people doing backpacks, security, crowd control, all of those types of things. Again, I mentioned before, all of our sponsors, this could not have happened without them. Mount Lebanon Baptist Church was our presenting sponsor, did an outstanding job. Their men of Mount Lebanon handled all of the food, all of the cooking, and fed everyone there. New Testament Church, Bishop Jerome Williams, him and Bishop Kim Brown, again, are both products of the Portsmouth Public School, and stepped up and wanted to be a part of it. Bishop Brown in New Testament gave us five thousand dollars. The Breeding Company, who's developing next door, the luxury apartment, stepped up and gave us five thousand dollars and very much wanted to be a part of this, showing their new into town and wanting to be a part of the Portsmouth family. And the Whitmore Company, Mr. Dan Ashton, so he gave us a thousand dollars. So, those were the numbers that we had operating and going into the event. When we got to purchasing the school supplies and the backpacks and all, it was amazing what we found out. Most of our suppliers, Lowe's, Cisco, all of them gave us things, if not free, an extremely reduced rate. Cisco gave us, and Cisco's located in Hobbit View in Suffolk, I think we had about ten cases of juices that pretty much took care of all of the kids. Lowe's gave water. Office Max probably did the most. We must have saved about thirty-five hundred dollars with the reduced price that Office Max, who's also on College Drive, gave us. So, as a result of all of that, we didn't need to spend all the money we raised. So, this morning, I got with the school foundation, and we completed all the finances, and we have seven thousand, five hundred dollars that we're donating to the school foundation, and we're setting up three scholarships, one for each high school, for any kid, listen parents, that has done community service and can prove that you've done the most community service. One in each high school, a fifteen hundred dollar scholarship. And the remaining balance of that, we're going to give to the innovator grants. I don't know how many of you know about the innovator grants in the school system, but teachers love to put in and submit different grant applications to do special projects with their classes, and every year, at the end of the year, we have a display at the annual banquet where we get to see the different things that the classes did. So, we're extremely pleased that we're able to do this, but Mr. Pace, I want to ask you to come up to the mic if you would. And if there's anything or anyone I have left out, I think of all of the organizations, our Wilson Ward Civic League, even though we had several civic leagues there, Wilson Ward showed up and a huge force. The AKAs, the Twenty Pearls Foundation, not only donated two hundred and sixty-two backpacks and the school supplies to go with them, they came out and worked the entire day volunteering. So, those ladies there, and again, there were other sororities that participated, but they did it in a grand way. And now, in my thanks to our seniors, the retired senior volunteer program that you all know that we have here showed up to participate. Was it about nine-thirty, a truck pulled up, and we had about ten or twelve seniors. Five of them, I want you, that didn't volunteer to listen to this, five of them had canes, and two of them had walkers. And I'm standing at the gate, and I asked, why were you here? They said they wanted to volunteer. They stayed all day, about twelve seniors, all day stuffing backpacks. And I looked at him, and he asked, what are they here for? I said, they're here to volunteer, and they worked all day. These were our seniors, and again, it's, that's right. That's right. So, it was a huge community effort, and I want to thank everybody for participating. Hopefully, we can do this on an annual basis. It is great to see those kids and see the people that come and bring backpacks to Delacatos, I mean, all of the organizations, the Deltas, I think, Councilwoman Ella Ward from Chesapeake, who is a Delta, they had some other function going on that morning, but she raced down to let us know that they were on their way with more backpacks and more school supplies. So, Mr. Pace, can you wrap this up for me?
Sure. It was a wonderful day. I mean, we had a lot of people that came out for the event. We started at ten o'clock, asking all of our exhibitors and volunteers to come. They came out, set up everything, and then by eleven o'clock, we opened, and the Portsmouth Cowboy Cheerleaders welcomed everybody in. I mean, we had probably fifty cheerleaders, I think it was, and when the people came through the gates, they formed a funnel, and the people came through and welcomed them in. It was a lot of people on the plaza. I'd never seen that many people on plaza before in my life. And when we had the drum line competition, of course, you know, the venue holds about six to five hundred people. There were six to five hundred-plus people in the venue, probably around, all around the gates and everything. And so, after that was going on, I left and came out and went back to the plaza, and then there was probably another fifteen hundred people on the plaza even at that point. And I said at one time to Valora, I think she was there, I said, when are these people going to stop coming? They continued to park in the garage and continue to come out. But we had a wonderful day. Everything worked very well. I mean, we distributed backpacks, like the mayor said, we fed people probably up until about four o'clock. They cooked hot dogs and hamburgers all day long. I mean, it was just a wonderful event without any incident whatsoever. Everything worked very well, and it, hopefully, you know, everybody saw that the kids were the beneficiaries of this particular event. So, it turned out very well.
All right. Thank you, and thank you, please. Okay. Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just following up on our discussion in the earlier session on the minority contracting issue, and unless council objects, as we move towards policy development, could you contact the different agencies, quasi-government agencies, Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing, EDA, PPIC, to get information on their minority contracting so we can get an idea of what they're doing as we start structuring the policy?
Okay.
And the second issue, I believe about two, three months ago, we discussed about EDA and PPIC as far as where their meetings were being held, and that was changed to City Hall. However, the time still remains at eight o'clock, and want to see if there's some justification for why it is at eight instead of a more convenient time where at least citizens can have some opportunities to attend versus it being at an eight o'clock time, especially considering the type of issues that are being discussed economically within both of those different agencies. And so, if there's some way that you can find out why they are continuing to meet at that time of the day and the justification for it and?
Let me ask our liaisons, because I think we took that back and brought that, for the EDA at least. Elizabeth, if you want to?
We did. Dr. Whitaker, I serve as EDA and PPIC. Mr. Cherry's with me on EDA, and Mr. Moody's with me on PPIC. Both organizations did talk about the time of day and the day of the week when we moved the meetings to City Hall. And without exception, the people who are on those commissions really like the eight o'clock time because they're, for the most part, business people, and it allows them, as you would understand, to start their day with the meeting and then go on to work instead of being caught at work and not being able to come to the meeting.
Yeah, well, all of our boards have people serving on them that have different capacities.
Right. You asked why. It's because that's what they wanted. That's the answer.
Right. Well, I'm just saying that I think that that's not a justification, considering that these are the different agencies where we have economic deals being discussed, and for that to be discussed at eight o'clock in the morning, if it means that there needs to be persons on these boards that can meet at convenient times, because these are not just their meetings, these are the meetings for the citizens also. And so, at eight o'clock in the morning, people getting their children to school, going to job, I think that that's highly inconvenient, and we need to convey to them that that needs to be changed.
That's your opinion. When we feel that way, I'll be glad to convey that.
If that's council's consensus to do that, of course.
Maybe the proper thing to do is for us to have that discussion on whether or not we would want to change the times, and if we do, and if it conflicts with members on the board and we had to switch out, then fine. If we elect not to do that, then we wouldn't have an issue. But maybe we should have that conversation, since you've already had the dialogue with the two boards, and they're comfortable. I know we had one young lady, when they was looking at moving in at one o'clock, she asked to resign because she couldn't make it at one. It was better for her to come in in the morning. But that's a conversation we should probably have, and then we'll follow up on it.
These are once-a-month meetings.
Yes, sir.
So, one day in the month, no one can adjust, I think, yes.
Understood. All right. We'll take the action on that, and I'll take the lead. Okay. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, sir. I was going to piggyback two things. This downtown Portsmouth Saturday was indeed a phenomenal day, and I wanted to thank all those involved, between the seven thousand people that were right outside the window here and the parking and issues that go with that amount of traffic. We had our Museum and Fine Arts Commission hosting the forty-seventh annual Seawall Art Show at the foot of High Street, which drew its own thousands of folks in music and entertainment all day Saturday, all day Sunday. That was marvelous. And then, of course, you know, Sunday movies, we had Friday night music, we had Thursday night music. It was quite a big weekend, the farmer's market going on on Saturday. It was interesting getting around downtown on Saturday if you wanted to put a car somewhere, and that's a great problem for us to have. Also, I wanted to share, of course, that our Sunset Thursday events continue to go on throughout the summer through September, and tomorrow night, there is a ticketed concert at Intello's Pavilion. Rob Thomas will be here. He used to be with Matchbox Twenty and sang on the Today Show just yesterday, so I guess he's coming to Portsmouth from New York City. So, that's it for now.
Okay. Very good. Anybody else?
Madam Clerk, before we head on, Mr. Manager, I do want to put one request in. This event we put on, we tried to use very little staff and city time, but we did have one young man, is it Malik, that works over there? He worked his behind off. Would you please, on behalf of us, thank him for all of the things he did there? That young man did an outstanding job working with all the volunteers, and he did. Was there anyone else we had in the city? I think it was actually no calls to the city, other than the normal, we had police coverage and things like that, but it was great to see the community come in, the business community, civic leagues, all of those folks coming together, working on the greater good. I can't think of a time where our churches and businesses and civic leagues and all of the other organizations have come together and put this type of effort together. So, it showed that those types of things are possible. With the Sunset Thursdays and the positive comments we're getting, people are coming out, was it five hundred we had Thursday? Who did we have Thursday? Good Life Band? And who did we have this Thursday?
Uh, David Knight.
Okay. And this is going great, and we're getting positive feedback from our citizens, and this is why we wanted to do it. So, again, thank everybody involved, but please let that young man know. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Fifteen dash three fourteen. Report on pending items, Ms. Bernadette Hogg.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. I'm Bernadette Hogg, City Embusman, and would like to give you the report on the non-agenda speakers and pending items for the council meeting on August eleventh, two thousand and fifteen. There were eleven non-agenda speakers at the council meeting on August eleventh, two thousand and fifteen. Three of the speakers required action by staff. Douglas Franklin expressed his concern about the storm drain located on his property in Churchland. The Public Works Director and Superintendent met with him on Wednesday after the meeting on Tuesday night and addressed his concerns by cutting some shrubs around the ditch. Public Works has CCTV'd the pipe that is along the side of his house and found no issues. Isis Tooten-Homan is concerned that HRT has eliminated a bus route in the Peachtree section of the city. Susan Wilson, Transportation Manager, has been in contact with HRT to look into the possibility of adding a stop north of the turn onto Town Point Road to shorten the distance to the nearest bus stop. Ms. Wilson will update the concerned parties once HRT has made a decision. Clyde Toller advised there's a lot of grass and cement medians along Airline Boulevard. General Services has sprayed the medians in this area to kill the grass. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Fifteen dash three fifteen. Non-agenda speakers, our first speaker is Mr. Barry Randall.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. I know we have a shorter time here tonight. I want to offer my sympathy to our city assessor for the situation that she faced, I believe it was last week. But I want to read something to you all that was written by one of the members of City Council concerning that mugging of our city assessor. And I quote, "Well, speaking for only me, three members of council voted to increase security by hiring police officers. Four members decided not to fund the hiring to replace retirements, resignations, and such. In effect, there is a hiring freeze. In my..." In my opinion, not a good decision for a city that is seeing an increased inquiry." End quote. And that was by Councilman Mr. Bill Moody. My concern is, it appears to me, and I would ask that City Council would direct the city manager to direct the Chief of Police, Mr. Moody, to really investigate really what happened to our city assessor because we've had crime a lot in this city. And for Mr. Moody to address the issue now, it begs the diff because I do not believe our city assessor should have to face what she faced. And I would guarantee you, if they investigate that situation, they will find out that Mr. Moody knows exactly who attacked that woman. Shame on Mr. Moody for trying to turn this situation back to these four black councilmen, Mr. Edmonds, Mr. Whitaker, Mr. Cherry, and our mayor. What, of the four of you all, what criminal do you all work with? What criminal do you all finance? These three councilmembers, they have worked with a criminal, a career criminal at that. We have one that is constantly working with a career criminal. And Mr. Moody, when he gets finished with you, he's going to destroy you. It is sad today that to bring down these black men and especially our mayor, that we would resort to stuff like this, tactics like this, trying to incite fear in these citizens to make these four black people look bad. We get mugged every day. Robbing crime happens every day, but Mr. Moody hasn't said anything about that. And I will admit, I do not think, Vice Mayor and Mr. Meeks, that you all had anything to do with this. I'm going to give you a pass today, Mr. Meeks. But, as much as you write up about stuff about people in the newspaper, don't allow us to see you in the newspaper because you better hope your nephew don't snitch. And Vice Mayor, I appreciate you stepping back from Mr. Giovanna Alexander because he won't do it. And this thing that happened to this city assessor, something is really wrong with that. Work with these young men, these black men on the disparity study and stay out of the criminal activity, sir. Thank you.
Councilman Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not going to respond to all those utterances, but I will say during the budget time last year, I had plenty to say about the decision not to fund, excuse me, not to fund money to hire police officers. And I think my two colleagues down there had plenty to say about it too. And as far as me knowing who did the mugging to our assessor, that's preponderous, but I'm not surprised.
Thank you, Mr. Moody. Mr. Cherry?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. One, four people appear to not fund, causing not hiring of police officers. If a police officer, that statement whoever wrote it, must Moody wrote it, was incorrect. If a police officer retires tomorrow, they can hire another one tomorrow. Those positions were frozen at the level they were in March. It did not affect anyone who, if somebody, a police officer leaves last week, they can immediately go out and try to hire somebody tomorrow. So, that statement was inaccurate. Secondly, this building is monitored by contracted police. The Portsmouth Police Department is not the body that borntes that parking lot or this building. It's contracted police officers. So, even if anything that was said was true, it would have nothing to do with that contract for this building. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Meeks?
Thank you. Mr. Randall, I'd like for you to come back up here. As long as I've been up here, I never talked, I never spoke out of turn to you, I never spoke out of your name. I don't appreciate what you said, all right? If you're implying something, you get it off your chest. You got something to say to me, you get it off your chest. Are we straight?
Can I respond?
They don't need to respond.
No, you asked me to come back up here.
I just wanted you to hear.
No, because you could have said that and I still would have heard it. First of all, no, first of all, if you're going to work with the disparity study, sir...
Mr. Randall.
Do you need to understand that your nephew is on the street on a PR...
Mr. Randall.
Okay? If that would have been a black man...
Sergeant Long, would you please?
If that would have been a black man, he would be in jail.
Mr. Randall, good night, sir.
Good riddance.
Dr. Whitaker?
I'm not one who spends a lot of time on Facebook, but if that statement is correct, Mr. Moody, that was quoted, I think that was highly irresponsible of you to make a statement as elected official connecting the situation as far as the number of police officers and the budget to the mugging that occurred to Ms. Culpepper. I think that's very poor. Also, you might want to go and do some research on the correlation between the number of police officers and crime and you will note that there's not a correlation there. So, before you make those type of irresponsible statements in the position that you have, I think you should think a little more deeper as to how that interacts on certain mentalities that are out here in our community and what that feeds into.
Thank you. Mr. Moody?
Councilman Whitaker, I don't need a lecture from you. I know your feeling on police officers. If it was up to you, we probably wouldn't have any, okay?
Once again, your ignorance is shown.
ignorance is shown.
Madam Clerk?
Okay. Our next speaker is Ms. Betty Ashbury.
Betty Ashbury, Churchland Section of Portsmouth. If you think allowing the citizens only three minutes to speak will discourage all of us unhappy with some of the antics and activities of this civic government from coming forward and expressing our frustration, forget it. It isn't so much the three minutes as it is the sneaky way it was decided behind closed doors. The statement was made by one councilman that we were allowed more time for speakers than any other city. We are allowed nothing that is not our freedom and our privilege as we are full-time citizens of Portsmouth and you on council are there only as long as the citizens allow you to serve and serve on that desk. If your time is so valuable that you can't listen to what citizens have to say for five minutes, good or bad, then you have no business being on council. And I hope that all the good citizens of Portsmouth will remember that in November 2016, when we had people on council like former Senator Luis Lucas, Cameron Pitts, Bernard Griffin, Ward Robinett, Ray Smith, Doug Smith, they never embarrassed and gave this city the bad publicity that this council has given us since January the 1st of this year.
Ms. Donna Si.
My name is Donna Si. I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. Principles of Liberty IV, without religion, the government of free people cannot be maintained. One definition of religion comes from the 1828 Noah Webster's Dictionary. Religion consists in the performance of the duties we owe directly to God from a principle of obedience to His will. Hence, all religion consists in the belief in a superior power governing the world and in the worship of such power. God has oversight of everything and we humans seek His favor with honor, which we might translate as worship, including, for example, sanctuaries devoted to Him, dedications, hymns, dances, communions, rituals, prayers, festivals, and sacrifices such as pledging our lives, our fortune, and our sacred honor. In all of these, God takes pleasure and in return, He gives honor to humans in the form of help or assistance, especially in the area of their own expertise. Are we worshiping God in our city today? What do our sanctuaries look like? Who are we dedicating our lives to? What hymns are we singing? What kind of dances are we doing? Are we taking communion? Are we participating in rituals and prayers? What kind of festivals is the city promoting? Are the citizens sacrificed in their lives, their fortune, and their sacred honor? When God takes pleasure in our worship of Him, in return, He gives honor to us in the form of help or assistance, especially in the areas of our expertise. What areas of expertise do the leaders of our city have? Who is an expert on the transportation projects? Who is an expert on the port expansion? Who is an expert on parks, recreation, and cemeteries? Who is the experts on the honoring of the poor? So far, I haven't witnessed any experts in Portsmouth. Why so much property on Teheran Boulevard? One such property is the Lincoln Cemetery, a cemetery where the honored dead are buried. Here are the broken flags that were lying on the ground. Someone had placed these flags around the monument to honor the Civil War dead. In 1916, members of the Silas Fellows Post Number 7 erected an obelisk in honor of the members of the 25th Army Corps, United States Colored Troops. And the inscription on the monument reads, "In loving remembrance of the men who in the darkest hour of slavery kept alive in their souls a love of mankind's rights, justice, and the unity of the United States of America." I wonder, are we the people keeping alive in our souls a love of mankind's rights, justice, and unity? Thanks for listening.
Thank you, ma'am.
Our final speaker is Mr. Sergio Neal.
And as Mr. Neal comes up, he's with the Circle of Youth Community Outreach Organization who I just met last meeting and you said you were going to be at the Community Day and you were there with Ms. Gatlin and some other folks and I want to thank you for volunteering.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to, first of all, good evening, City Council, especially you, Vice, I'm sorry, Mayor Wright. I've had, I'm sorry, lost my train of thought. But, nevertheless, I wanted to thank you all for the opportunity for allowing us to serve. We are a new outreach group in the community. We like to, you know, get our youth involved in positive things, especially with all the negative that goes on around them on a daily basis. The second thing I wanted to speak on was I am glad that all of the City Council voted to take that, take those funds and to put them into scholarships. I myself, in my professional career, I'm the operations manager for RSB Foods in Hampton. We franchise a wing zone over there. And talking to some of my staff, they are Hampton University students. We all know that universities like Hampton are non-state funded college, which the tuition rates are outrageous, in my opinion, at 30,000 plus a year for some of those students. Any money that they can get to help them go to college by all means necessary, they are very happy to get it. My staff over there is 90% college kids and trust me, they're always looking for ways to get money. So, I would like to applaud the City Council for that move, don't bring that money into scholarships. The next thing I wanted to say was that we, the Circle of Youth, are having a back-to-school cookout, nothing big, at the Brighton Park on the corner of Lansing Avenue off of Portsmouth Boulevard. So, if you have kids that want to come out that are 13 and 17-year-olds, to sign up, we'll be out there cooking or whatever, you know? We donate, us as a board, you know, we come for, we get donations from however we can and, you know, we just give it right back to the youth. A lot of the things that we do, you know, it's hard to, you know, for some people for being a new organization to get funding, but I can tell you myself that I do take the money that I make with RSB Foods and put it into this organization because I'm the type of person that whatever I can do, no matter if it's giving a shirt off my back to give back to the community. I read something in, you know, the paper today, my grandmother was born in Portsmouth, she lived in Newport News, and she was talking to me today about Portsmouth and what's going on and how Portsmouth used to have movie theaters and all these kinds of businesses going on back down High Street. And she loves Portsmouth. She moved all the way from Atlanta seven years ago to come back, or no, actually, five years ago, to come back to Portsmouth, where she, well, come back to the area close to Portsmouth she could get to be back home. And she always said, you know, "If I could, if it was in my strength to move back to Portsmouth." And, you know, I just want to, again, to applaud y'all because that's something that she's very proud of, of being from Portsmouth. So, you know, it's just a lot of, you know, little things I want to talk about. But, again, you know, with the Circle of Youth, it's having the Community Day cookout or, you know, back-to-school event on, at Brighton Basketball Court this weekend, it's on Saturday from 5 to 8. So, anybody want to come out, sign the 13 and 17-year-olds up by all means necessary or look us up on Facebook at facebook.com/circleofyouth. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Edmonds?
Yes, Mayor, I'd just like to make a statement. Portsmouth has been a great city in my 66 years of living here, except for the four years that I served in the military. Going to Vietnam gave me a better appreciation of the city I'm from. We're not the best, we're not the worst, but we're better than we've been. And sometimes, it's just necessary to hear people vent, but not always respond to it. I don't think any of us mean any less than making our city good. Sometime, it might not always be perfectly clear, but sometime when you sit here and you hear things from different perspectives, it makes you wonder, "Where did that come from?" I don't recall even hearing in our meeting, a closed meeting, on top of that, about us lowering the time. I don't, and I don't miss meetings and I just don't recall that. But, I think for our city to move forward, that's going to take the good, the bad, and the ugly, but it can move forward. We have to love ourselves and love our cities. And if there's a councilperson among you that you feel needs some help, lift them up in prayer. May God bless you and have a good evening tonight.